I call this meeting to order, please send for the pledge. And one call please. Mayor Potem Brown, Councilwoman Swab, Councilwoman Shonary, Mayor Durham. Public comment, we do have one person signed up tonight, each speaker has five minutes and when you get to the podium, please state your name and address and I have Brandon Westhoff.
My name is Brandon Westhoff, my address is 1248 West Royal County Drive, 111. And I just want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I want to thank you guys for assisting us and getting us plowed all the way out to the pasture of the storm on Thursday, I really appreciate it. Also want to thank you guys for the appropriation that you guys gave to tomorrow, I love to hear from the donkeys this year. Really do appreciate you guys being the cooperative that I feel with us. And I just want to remind you guys that we're throwing three events this year. We'll have the donkey release on Memorial Day Monday, followed by picnic in the park. And then Donkey Derby Days is moved to June, on the eighth through the thirtieth. And that's going to be a very exciting event for us this year, we expect the attendance to be twenty-five percent more. So we figure about, we had about twenty thousand people on Saturday last year. So that's great. And then our last event for years, our Spal Fest in October, October five and six. Celebrating the changing of beliefs and the falls.
Thank you guys, we know soon.
First panel, we have a complaint.
So, but I appreciate you guys letting me talk.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks for any good questions. Thank you, thank you.
All right, the approval of meeting minutes will be moved to the next meeting because they were not completed before they had to close the office due to the storm, so we'll have the meetings on next meetings, minutes on next meeting's agenda, sorry about that. Okay, reports, city administrator Frank.
First, Paul is not here, he's not feeling well, so he has nothing to to report to the council. I guess a little bit on the, we can talk more when we get to the agenda item A, but I just think there's a lot of people that need to be thanked and of course, when you start this, you're always going to forget or not recognize people, so first off, I'll thank everybody that helped with the snow. But Public Works, we had three guys in town and they worked the whole time to clear streets for fire, EMS and police because we had people in dire straits, people that were on oxygen, they were running out of oxygen, generators weren't working, EMS couldn't get to them, we had guys clearing streets. So I know the chief went up to tell him his fire vehicle, he was hauling people up to the EMS station so the EMTs could give them oxygen. It was all hands on deck, I know the police, the same thing, we had officers that were in town and they were on the whole time to try to get rest and I know we had donations from a couple of them, I think the mayor's going to talk about that, but trying to even feed the people, people couldn't cook, so it was, it was a mess, but fire, police, EMS, Public Works. I know there's other city employees that were working too, but I know council members up here were out clearing people's driveways so they could get out of their houses and and that's just the beginning, I know there's people all over town that were out helping their neighbors. And I know Zed was cooking, I know the Elks were supposed to have something for Saturday night and he got all the food and went on to cook it because people weren't needing it, so it just it's for small towns that's they pull together, so I do want the council to know that I did contact Black Hills Energy, the mayor, and I talked about this the other day about asking them to come in and meet with council, talk about what the issue was, what are they doing? Again, I, everything was on the finger pointing because I do know kind of what happened, but not for me to tell you, it's, we'll let Black Hills come tell you, but it was the snow event. But I will tell you one thing, when their guys are out on foot hiking through the forest with stuff on their back to get power back on in Purple Creek, we should thank them, I mean those guys were, they got to, they got to an area they could not take their trucks. So they were putting stuff on their backs and hiking in. And they could go about fifteen feet before they had to stop and rest because of the snow was three foot deep and some higher with wind, anyway. Almost made me cry today, none of these guys were out there when we were just saying, where's the power, where's the power, and you got guys working twenty-four seven out there trying to get your power back on, so.
Actually, today we had a service call in Victor, when the whole service office house was down on this house. So we were out there looking for Black Hills today and I asked the guy, I said, I thought we were supposed to run out of power anymore, what happened? And he goes, I'll show you a picture, he showed me pictures of some of the lions, no snow on them. You know, that big, and then when the snow fell off the rain, you know, they started doing this. You know, I called the wave or something and then the snow fell and the lions, and then they hit each other and then, you know, they pop out the fuses and everything, so they go down, send back on, that's why the power came back on. And then it's do it again, you know, and then they start going bang, bang, and they hit each other and they go out, so. Yeah, these guys, they couldn't get their equipment in there, he said, it was just but yeah, they did a good job.
But that was a break, I mean it's, it was really difficult to describe it, but it's, though you had a mess on their hands and I'm surprised they got in on as quick as they did.
Yeah, it was alright.
Anyway, so we're trying to set a meeting up, I gave them the third of April, the seventeenth of April's the next council meetings. We thought whatever day they could make it, we'd do a workshop at four o'clock. Or I gave them four o'clock or five thirty, I gave them the option, do they want to come in four, or do they want to come at the council meeting? And they're going to get back to us, but so I gave them time, I think they want to come talk also. Anyway, that's my report, thank you very much.
Um, Frank, just while we're on the topic, I do have a list of community members and I know that this list does not include everybody who helped, but I think it's really important to note the people that I'm aware of. And please feel free to add more, let me know if you know of anybody, but the following people I feel went above and beyond in many ways to help the community and help our neighbors, Erin Stewart, Jeffrey Jester, Councilman Bowman, Councilman Schwab, Councilwoman Shonary, Zed Panic and the Elks for the food, Mike Olson, Greg Loscorn, Suzie Atherton, Nancy and Ken Hartsfield, Katie Meyer, Bruce Coleman, Brendan Westhoff. And I want to give a special shout out to Shannon and Carl Anderson, they're actually with the Park Residence, but when they found out that we were needing more food at the EMS building, they went to Walmart and they drove up here on, was it Friday? Drove up on Friday and delivered a bunch of food and so even people outside the public community were willing to help. And then also, a very special thank you to the Double Eagle and Full House Resort for providing food to the EMS building as well and also to the Chaminet. They opened up their lobby as a warning center because we, we identify that we don't have one yet, we're talking about how to mitigate that, but thank you so much to everybody and again, I know I'm not, I'm not getting all the names that helped out, but this is one of the biggest reasons I live here, is because of all of you and I just want to express my appreciation, so. Thank you. Will you be giving a finance director report on behalf of Paul?
Nothing about finance.
Alright, well in that case, let's go ahead and move on to new business agenda item A. Consider approval of local disaster emergency declaration in Purple Creek due to upstream winter storms, snowfall and ongoing power outage.
Okay, let's tell you where this came from. Thursday morning, bright and early, the mayor and I were in contact, we knew things were going on, I had talked to both chiefs what was happening and Rod, who was Public Works supervisor that was here in town trying to move snow. So the first thing we talked about was declaring an emergency because that opens the, I guess you could say the pocketbook of the city. Needs council approval, which we didn't have to call the council together for that, but declaration of emergency basically allows again, the pocketbook to be open, if we have to hire people to help Public Works move snow, if we had to pay overtime for people to be in, which we have, we've already paid overtime for Public Works and police and fire. But it kind of opens the pocketbook, it I know there's people in town that Public Works has pushed snow maybe in front of their houses. Declaration of emergency, we had to do whatever we had to do to get streets open so police, fire and animals could get to people that needed help. So I know we've already had a call from a gentleman that's complaining with snow in front of his house, sorry. We're trying to get it moved now, Public Works pushed it to get the streets open and now they're going around trying to pick up the snow to remove it, get it out of the streets and out of people's yards, but if it is what it is, it was a declaration of emergency by the mayor which says basically whatever we need to do to get the streets open and get room for fire, police and EMS, any other emergencies that need to happen, it can happen. You need to add to that, any errands, that pretty much covered, it pretty much opens the door for the city to do whatever the council directs or the mayor directs at the time to get done. And also after she declared, I asked her to call the county commissioners because the next step is to get the county to declare. Because this is the steps to get to the governor's office. And once the governor declares the area a state of emergency, then it opens up state funds, emergency disaster funds for reimbursement to the city and the county, which the county is still in a state of emergency, they're still hiring people, you go out there and try to take people out. They're still stuck at their houses, you can't get out, so look at this. If you were in Purple Creek, the guys did a great job, loss of life, that was our primary goal, when we started talking Thursday morning, loss of life, we've got to get people that need help now. Then our concern was a warning center to get people over, they think that we're going to be freezing because there's no electricity to a warning center, so that was our two primary goals, it's loss of life and warning. And food. And left our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, no problem, we have emergency generators, everything came on. Water was supplied in town, didn't have any other issues with that, so. That's the purpose of the declaration, the declaration by the mayor is only good for seven days, today's the seventh day. So the council to do is to ratify her decision to declare the state of emergency and I would recommend the council ratify her, I don't think we need to go any further with the declaration, if it does, like the county, every seven days they have to get together and they have to rededicate the declaration of emergency to extend it another seven days, which I'm sure the county is continuing to do. Since the governor's office now has opened up some funds and the county is accessing those funds, we will also look at accessing those funds to reimburse the city for overtime costs and any other costs that come out. What it also did though, it told us that this is what we need to work on, one, we don't have a generator at school, that's a big area for people to get into warm. The other, my thought was the rec center, we don't have a generator there, that's also a big area. If people need a place to get warm or get out for any other reason, a tornado or whatever, then we need to house them, that's another big area. The rec center has a small kitchen, the school has a big kitchen to feed people, so what are we looking at that? And also a generator out at Public Works, we have farm tanks out there for diesel and for diesel and gas, but our big tanks have to have power. So we're going to look at a generator at Public Works so that we could still get, Victor was out of diesel. We could not give him diesel because we were concerned about what we might need, the generator at the EMS station or the care center ran and it was a heated place, people were taken there, but that generator I think runs on diesel. So we were concerned about giving away diesel, we didn't know how long this would last, we knew that generator had to stay running. So we knew we might need to take diesel to the generator at the care center. But we got through it and I'm open for any questions, I think that was covered. I apologize to any council members that didn't get early noticed, but I had two phones like yours, I had chief on one with the mayor and I had the chief on one with the mayor and we were talking and Rod with Public Works. Time was going, man, we were burning that day trying to get everything set up, I think I finally got an email sent out to council members because they didn't know what was going on. Anyway, it was an interesting day.
It was, and one thing I would just like to point out, after Frank and I talked and I went ahead and declared the state of emergency, I contacted Commissioner Eric Stone and there was no pushback, there was no question, extremely supportive and from the moment, like you Frank said, from the moment that first phone call was made over the course of two and a half hours, I probably had sixty to seventy in-going and outgoing calls. The thing that I appreciate the most about working with the county and also the city of victims, there were no egos at play, nobody, I mean, everybody worked so well together and we trusted each other to each do our part and so I have to say, I'm, you know, this is my first, my first rodeo was something like this and it couldn't have gone any better as far as coordination, so I just want Teller County to know, Teller County Sheriff Department JT with the Office of Emergency Management and it was, I'm just very impressed and very, very grateful, so.
I mean, I don't even remember, was there ever been a state of emergency declared? I don't even remember.
Not for the snow. Well, we did, the fire, we went through something, we killed the
And then it was an audio brain.
So then do we, do I call for a vote, have a start?
Just ratify the resolution.
Alright, can I get a motion please?
I'm motion, we ratifying. Ratifying the local disaster emergency declaration.
I'll second.
I'll vote please. Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Schwab?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shonary?
Yes.
If you're approaching the ground?
Yes.
If you're around?
Yes.
Alright, agenda item B. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four for a certificate of appropriateness for Century Casino Inc. for a new entry awning, metal canopy sign and corner sign located at two hundred East Bennett Avenue. Is Ken, I have Marianne, Ken Hartsfield, thank you.
Yes, hi. Storm strikes again. We had a sort of reservation meeting scheduled for Thursday, we probably have a notice. And based on the situation, the council feels a lot of help. We're only out, that meeting this week, but then realized we didn't have proper presentation. And so we don't resent the council, but we have a heavy duty review and there comes, so we're just getting restated. Forty-four seventeenth, council. You know that date. Also be a case for enhanced that's. And stick, you're on the side of your body as well.
So you just need to table this, is that the?
I just think there's no action, you don't have a recommendation, so there's nothing for you to vote on. So.
So you don't want to do anything at this time. It's really withdrawn from that.
Except if you, you're supposed to set a date specific, but you're waiting on HP to give you a recommendation, we're hoping to get about seventeenth, but I would just take no action, I would just pass, go to the next item.
Yeah, that's right. I don't think to take any action.
Excuse me. So I don't, so we're good. Agenda item C, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two declaring Purple Creek is a non-sanctuary city, at this time I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Shonary.
Do you want to read the whole thing?
Did you, we want to discuss or did you want to discuss any other report?
Mostly what's going on in a lot of areas around the state are right in this direction, regardless of our surrounding counties. Vermont County, Camden City, Monroe, Colorado Springs. They're all in towards non-sanctuary with what's happening. In Denver, a lot of those migrants are starting to be forced out to other places and it's causing issues for homeless communities at ours. So we put together this resolution just basically saying we are not going to be a sanctuary city. And if you'd like, you can read the whole thing.
Was there any other discussion or questions before we proceed with the reading of the resolution?
So this just means that Denver is not allowed to ship them here?
No, you don't have any control of that, yeah, we can't control what we do. We don't control anyone coming into the city, this just states or stands on as the city with housing, giving shots, anything like that. To what's every little glorifying. So.
Alright, well if you'd like to go ahead and read the resolution.
Lots of references. Whereas the city believes in and is committed to enforcing immigration laws to the community and upholding the laws of the state Colorado and the principles of the United States Constitution and as the city has observed this, observed the severe negative impacts on American cities under self-designation as sanctuary cities and the subsequent arrival of thousands of immigrants. And whereas the federal government has failed to secure borders resulting in millions of immigrants entering our country illegally and putting catastrophic stress on services such as hospitals, schools and housing. And whereas those entering this country illegally can pose a significant public health and safety risk to a community when there is an increase in crime, communicable disease and accelerating demand on public infrastructure such as services, public safety, schools and the justice system. Excuse me, and whereas the city supports legal immigration into the United States and recognizes persons seeking refuge and asylum from oppressive governments throughout the world and whereas the city continues to suffer financial strain resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic and must retain its limited resources for its citizens. And whereas the city is currently experiencing a severe housing shortage and cannot support the influx of immigrants in the city. Now, therefore, a great result by the city council of the city of Purple Creek, the city of Purple Creek is not a sanctuary city and will not spend any tax dollars on services other than emergency services related to the migrant crisis. We will continue to prioritize the needs of our citizens. Be it further resolved, then the city will continue to cooperate with ICE to the extent the current law will allow. And we will call upon the federal government to take immediate action to secure our country's borders and enforce our current immigration laws.
Mayor, you do have some publics that want to comment. I think there might be some here, but if one online, then wants to comment.
Yes. Beth, can you hear us? I just want to clarify, this is a five minute time limit. She says, what happens when the US Congress can't agree because of politics?
Happened to take the comment?
Yeah.
There was not a dialogue?
Yeah, we didn't have a response, so. Can you read it?
She said, what happens when the US Congress can't agree because of politics?
And what we're saying is this is a public comment, so it's not for us to respond or the council to respond. So somebody has comments on the resolution, you can come up and comment. But it's not for the council to get into it.
My name is Annie Jockey, I know most of you guys and I'm in favor.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the group? Okay, then do I need a motion then? Alright, can I get a motion?
Did you have comments?
Well, I see on the resolution is where, where we do state the arrival of thousands of immigrants, I want to make sure that it's clear that it's thousands of illegal immigrants. No problem if you want to come into this country legally.
We just say down below the state supports legal immigration, forget it.
That's your decision, you want to change it or it's up to people, I think.
Yeah, that's okay.
You just need a motion.
Yeah, can I get a motion please?
I'll make a motion, we approved resolution two zero two four dash zero two, declaring Purple Creek a non-sanctuary city, I'll second.
Well, please. Councilwoman Shonary?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Durham?
Yes.
Agenda item D, consider approval for the donation of a fire department rescue vehicle to the Forest and Fire Protection Chief O'Connor.
Yes. When I first arrived on my first trip out to Public Works, I noticed that there was a rescue truck that had been deactivated so to speak and was parked outside. Been there, then sat for a couple of years, there was some talk that Public Works might, Public Works might have a use for the vehicle. That time was coming on, they took on to in conversation with the Forest and Fire Department Fire Chief, they had a need in Forest for another rescue vehicle. And my recommendation to council is to donate, please, one that is surplus, if you know, to that organization and of course. There is a challenge in the state law related to donations by one entity to another. But when it comes to an action of public good, the Supreme Court has decided that it is a reasonable action by this body to donate the vehicle to another supporting profit for the purpose of and therefore I would recommend, so I have the question. Any questions? Thank you.
And we put that in the memo, so.
I appreciate that very much.
Now it's public talks.
His presentation covers all the bases.
Well, I fully support helping out our local families.
Especially our volunteer.
That was, that was a question, is that a volunteer? Yeah, definitely.
Self-styled to the chief and maybe a couple officers, but they're all pretty, they're recent. Pass the drive, the people, however you want.
And this is like, I mean, it's been sitting a couple of years and it's reliable vehicle that they're not going to have to double a ton of money in.
Say that, so is it right?
And that was our concern, right? But Public Works had invested some resources in getting it ready for a public work mission after a fire department. So although it has been sitting, it was kind of prepped. At least a couple of years ago, our folks have started it. It started with little assistance battery wise. We've located ignition keys but not door keys, so there were lots of challenges two years later. But there would be a little bit of prep from the country, so you're going to go taking speed house off and doing some radius around just we have to eat them, we'll, we'll make sure they have them. But I think it's ready to go and they may need to invest a little bit in it, tire's been out, weather for two years, I'm sure. But it did run and they started.
Alright, unless there's any further discussion, can I get a motion?
Make a motion, the through the donation of fire department vehicle to Forest Protection.
through the donation of fire department vehicle to Forest Park Protections.
I'll second. Vote, please. Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Schwab?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shonary?
Yes.
Mayor Durham?
Yes.
And, uh, before we conclude our meeting this evening, if Councilman Schwab has an announcement that you would like to make?
Uh, I would just like to put out there that tomorrow is World Down Syndrome Day, three, two, one, is, significant for the reason that the third chromosome had, I know the twenty-first chromosome has three duplicates, and everybody else has two of every, but on, trisomy twenty-one, which is Down Syndrome, it is three, two, one, so that's why they determined three, two, one to be World Down Syndrome Day. It's celebrated, uh, it's always blue and yellow, and wacky socks, like mismatched socks. As I can buy, I'm not real sure if they're in sales. And, um, they're really cool.
Yes, thank you, thank you everybody for being here, uh, this meeting is adjourned.